Trustee Rassich. Trustee Rassich. Trustee Wojkowski.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee Orwork.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
If we could rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole workshop held on June 22nd.
A move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries presidential comments.
Just one quick one. Our Plainfield Fest is seventeen through nineteen, so it's this weekend. Watch out for kids.
Trustees' comments?
Does anybody, since Chief Conopek's not here, does anybody know how many of the weather radios were sold?
I was asked that question by another trustee before the meeting as well, and the answer is, I'm sure, a lot were sold. I don't have an answer yet. Actually, I was waiting until the full program was done to get a full update, so...
I think they commented the other day, last Wednesday, it was three hundred and fifty some.
Okay. Anyway, I have one of them. It went off at four twenty-two this morning. And if you've never heard it go off in the middle of the night before, it's alarming, shall we say. Gets your attention. Woke us all up and, you know, did a good job of communicating the problem that was going on, so... I highly recommend that people... We have two thousand of them, I think, to sell, so I hope, highly recommend people pick those up because they really do pay off for the kind of weather we got going on these days.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not, this would be the time for public comments? There are no public comments, and we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is video gaming.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow trustees of the village of Plainfield. My name is Kevin McGority, and we're a licensed operator. Our company name is Tap Room Gaming, and we've been a licensed operator here in the state of Illinois for a number of years now. I'm a proponent of video gaming, and I'm here tonight on behalf of our industry and some of the restaurants and bar owners here in the village of Plainfield. I have submitted some earlier information to your attention last week and again tonight in supporting my position here. I'm respectfully requesting that you reconsider your position in allowing video gaming in the village of Plainfield. I'm here to assist you in any way I can, and if not tonight, at a later date. And I'm just here to try to help you reach a decision. So, I appreciate you taking the time to allow me to speak tonight, and if you have any questions at this point, I'd be more than happy to try and assist you in any way.
You indicated, I'm sorry, that you represent some of the restaurants here in Plainfield. Could you give us some of the names that, who you represent?
I've contacted every restaurant that would be eligible under the statute.
So, just by contacting them, that doesn't necessarily mean you represent them, does it?
Well, I'm representing them in the sense that there's a letter that was given to me on behalf of one of the restaurant owners that you have at your disposal right now. And in that letter addresses their concerns and also what they're asking and requesting.
Which restaurant is that?
That from the letter that's here?
Yeah.
Is Fox's.
Fox's. Thank you.
Question about, there's some gray areas on your, information's interesting looking at it.
Thank you.
I've looked through it all, but sometimes I assume if they've been blanked out or grayed out, they no longer have them or they didn't have them at that time. There's at least one in here, I haven't found it at the moment, that basically said they had it last year but not at all this year, or something like that. Is there some community that has rejected it after approving it?
And the information that I've supplied to you is the towns that it's eligible in and has been, is going back as far as 2012. The information I provided was Aurora, Crest Hill, Joliet, Lockport, Montgomery, Oswego, and Romeoville.
Well, Romeoville has a total, but the amount in 2015 is zero. Did they take the machines out in Romeoville? So, next, it's the last page, and I finally found what I was looking for.
Bear with me for just a moment. I don't exactly know what, the page that you're on, in the first page, that's Mediti on Plainfield, those were the total numbers across the board with each of the individual towns.
Well, the one I've got is the Romeoville Video Gaming Report dated seven, eight, 2015, very last page of the little packet that we had.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. I apologize for that. That's an oversight because that should not, that should not appear to be looking the way it is.
Okay.
But it's a very good observation on your part. I appreciate pointing it out to you. I apologize, though, but above there is more of an accurate.
Okay. Well, let me go to the...
These are strictly right from the Illinois Gaming Board's website where the numbers are compiled from.
On the Aurora Video Gaming Report, which is the second page, I think, in 2015, there are one, two, three gray bars across. I gather there's no revenue or no, they're no longer doing it in 2015 in those three locations?
That's correct. They took it out or they're no longer in operation.
Okay. Yeah. Well, okay, one of the concerns I have with the whole concept, I understand the revenue associated and so on, but I look at all the discussion around casinos like it's found money, and money's got to come out of somebody's pocket. As far as I know, we all have the same amount of cash, and nobody's got reserves that says, oh, I'll go and get my reserves and go play machines, so it's got to come from what they would spend someplace else. And that's my concern. I think I'd prefer to see existing businesses supported as best they can without having funds, important funds siphoned off by the gaming. That's personal opinion. I'm entitled to that, I think, but I'm sure I'm not the only one who's got that opinion. But, you know, I'm curious about the impact on the other businesses. I'm curious about the impact on their business because you put them in tap places. Yeah, they show the revenue for there, but what's happened to the revenue of the other side of their business? If it's a restaurant business like Mr. Rubin's got, or some others, you know, has that gone up because they had video gaming, or has it gone down? It presumably attracts more people. I understand that, but it may, same amount of money may transpire, it's just that it goes different pockets. I mean, either you come in and eat, or you come in and game and eat a snack or an appetizer. I don't know.
If your, if your existing business is, your business is founded on your principle, your restaurant's for food, if it's alcohol's secondary, if you're a bar, your primary principle is alcohol. This is designed for local entertainment. Now, going back to your original comment about the casinos, the casinos have always, or have taken the position that, you know, it has affected their bottom line.
Oh, it has? Okay.
They've taken that position, but there's a reason for that position. It's also based on their immediate, they have competition within themselves because when the Rivers Casino opened up in Displanes, that was in the making for a long period of time. Now, they're doing a million dollars a day at the Rivers Casino in Displanes. It will affect the other nine existing casinos. It taps into them. But what's happening here is there's, there's a lot of numbers thrown around, but the reality is which position, which side are you on? Because if you're on the casino side, you're going to say video gaming is hurting us. If I'm on, I'm on the video gaming side, I'm going to try and say, well, yes and no because it depends on how you look at it. And the wagering is different because, as you well know, or if you do not know, your maximum bet is $2, your maximum win, your payout is 500. So, it's local entertainment within neighboring communities. So, to go to the casino has its challenges for some people because they have to get there. It's a destination. This is in your back, is in your neighborhood. It's at your local proprietor. Most of their business will come from the existing clientele. To answer your question about will it affect their sole, what their business, their primary mission is, in some cases it will, but in other cases, it's come back the other way because people come in new that weren't there before. So, you're bringing in new clientele at the same time because it's there. But most of the players will pick out one or two or three places that they like, and they will frequent those. That's what the studies will show.
Okay. The bottom line, like the casinos, if somebody wins a lot of money at the casinos, they make sure that they prevent that from happening again in case they're cheating or something. Here, revenue says you're bringing in more than you're paying out. So, the average person's going to lose four or five percent of what they bring in. I think that's the number I heard before. I don't know whether it's still true or not, but... So, basically, it's entered, it's got to be entertainment because it's not a way to make money.
Well, it wasn't, I wouldn't call it a livelihood. You know, no one's going to, no one's going to wager on this to make it their sole income. They're going to do it for discretionary dollars that they would be spending elsewhere. And if they're not buying lottery tickets, they're going to the racetrack. If they're not getting on the racetrack, they're going to the casinos. This was designed for local businesses, number one, and in the neighborhoods. This is why it has been very successful in a lot of places, and a lot of business owners will tell you this, because they're successful today because this was a way to bring them back. Because when you put the ban on smoking in a lot of the establishments, it took away from their business. But if you ask those same owners today, the vast majority will say they're happy that it went away, but this is replacing it at the same time.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you.
You've, you've talked to, you said all the restaurants in town?
I've contacted.
You've contacted. How many have you talked to, and how many are for, how many against? Do you have a...
My position here tonight, so you understand my position, is obviously unfavorable if you were to allow it. But my position to the owners and establishments in your town is to have the option to say they can or cannot have it. Because some will do it and some will not do it because it's built upon, you know, there's restrictions within, is it their clientele? They know their customers best. I don't. They, some, I would say the vast majority have said if I had the, I want the option, Kevin. That's what they will all agree to. Whether they, they will all do it, I don't know that.
But you have no hard and fast numbers on any of this, right?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trustee Lamb pretty much summarized what I was thinking. What I guess I'd like to see would be some sort of data-driven research, not just opinion or, you know, speech. As far as research that shows, where is the actual money going to come from? Everyone, whether they're on this board or they're just a member of the community, has only so much disposable income. Where is the extra income going to come from to fund this program, and is it going to actually adversely affect the established restaurants? Like, for example, you have somebody that has $100 to spend, okay, and they would normally spend it, let's say, at one of our pizza restaurants that serves alcohol.
Right.
And now they're going to spend $75 on pizza and alcohol and $25 on video gaming. How does that affect the restaurants? And what restaurants have you seen possibly go out of business, not seeing any have, as a result of this being implemented? I guess that you're, you're moving around money, and not you, but this concept moves money around. I'm not necessarily comfortable with it. And the other piece of research I'd like to see is what deadweight loss have we seen as a result of this as well? And if there's any research that shows that, I mean, right now you're showing all the revenue, but we're not showing any loss. So, I, as Trustee Lamb pointed out, I'd like to see some research that actually shows how this may have adversely affected restaurants.
Right.
So, we can make sure we're doing the right thing here for the community.
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy and willing to do that at a later point, but to answer your question about the pizza parlor, if somebody in there is spending $100 at the bar and buying pizza, we're not talking about the people that win money in the establishments as well because the vast majority will spend that money in the establishment, one way or the other. So, it's, you're creating wealth within wealth at the same time, too.
So, you're saying that gambling is going to create wealth in the community, is what you're saying?
To the business owners.
To the business owners.
Correct. This is what it was designed for because, remember, this was in the legal business that was out there for a long time, okay? And we, and legislators decided in General Assembly to legalize the industry and to tax the industry, and also as a source of income to the establishments, and also creating a new industry, but legitimizing the industry as operators that can provide and assist those establishments in furthering their business. This was about growth at the end of the day. It wasn't designed to put people in, in other words, people are gambling already in the state of Illinois. We all know that. And this is law, and it's been law since 2009, but it took a while for it to get up and running for a lot of different reasons that I won't bore you with right now. But it is a legitimate legal industry as we speak, and there are neighboring towns that are making money, and the towns themselves are making money for the town. So, my point is, for the establishments, they have the option, is to give them that option. If they want to do it, they can do it. If they decide not to, they decide that. They know their business the best.
Okay. But again, I would like to see some sort of research that shows where is the money coming from, and where are these businesses possibly losing as well?
Absolutely.
With Mr. Peck's statements, there's also societal costs in there that can't be factored in on a dollars and cents vector. I am not opposed to video gambling. I'll tell you that right now. But I think it has to be done in the right way where you don't have a, the whole Lockport Street becoming a gambling parlor. It can't, it can't be that way. And I don't know that the monies made by the businesses won't offset their, their product. I mean, you yourself say that there's some businesses that won't want it in. Any businessman in the world wants to make a good living, but yet he doesn't want to have the video machines that will make him that money? I, I think it's, I don't necessarily agree with what you're saying on that, that aspect.
I'm not sure what, I'm not...
I mean, you were saying earlier that the, the video gaming, that it's revenue positive for all these businesses, but yet there are some businesses that don't want them?
Will not allow it because it doesn't fit their model for their clientele. In other words, I wouldn't expect it to be in an Applebee's. I wouldn't expect it to be in a TJ Friday's. I mean, in chain restaurants, they, they have issues with this right now because it's new, it's still new in some ways to some people, but in other ways, you know, like, I understand what you're saying at the same time.
Okay.
But it's, it's not for everyone, but it is for others. And that's why I say, right now, they don't have the option to say, I can or I can't. Right now, it's not allowed. So, giving them the option to decide that. But you, as the village, control the liquor licenses as well, and, you know, as far as how you would control that, that's up to you, as you well know. So, it doesn't have to be on every corner in the true sense of the word because the existing liquor license holders are the people that would be eligible if they have an on-premise liquor license within the statute of Illinois. But as a village level, you have the options to do certain things, too, which other towns have done.
What, what is your business in this mix?
To provide the, the equipment, the machines to the locations. We service the account. We're heavily regulated. This is an industry through the Illinois Gaming Board that we have to apply. We, we're granted a license to be a provider. It is what, terminal operator is what they term, their term is used, but we are a provider of the equipment. We handle the money. The location never touches the money. That's our responsibility.
So, the state gets some, local gets some, businesses get some, and then I'm guessing as a machine owner, you get some?
Thirty-five percent to the establishment, thirty-five percent to us as a licensed operator, and the thirty percent to the state, and then five percent of that goes back to the local municipality.
And then are the payouts regulated? In other words, and what is...
Highly regulated.
And what is the lowest payout the machine can provide?
On a percentage?
Yes.
It's higher, it's, well, it can go up to ninety, ninety-five percent.
What's the lowest it can go?
Eighty-five.
You acted like, I mean, if it's regulated, it's either eighty-five, or you're kind of like, huh.
Because winners create players in this industry.
Pardon me?
Winners create players in this industry.
Right.
In other words, so you have a higher probability of winning, but the denominations are lower than you have in the casinos.
So, the payout, if somebody asks the payout, the payout would be a minimum of eighty-five percent?
Yes.
Just for the trustees, just to remind some of the trustees on the board at that time, and then the new trustees, this was brought before the board about eighteen months ago. And what it is, is we have an ordinance that states you cannot have games of chance. And so, what it was, there was a proposal before this board, excuse me, this and the other board, that we change our ordinance to allow this. So, we'd have to change our ordinance so this would be allowed. Not changing the ordinance, and it's not allowed. And they used the term opt-out years ago when they first started this. A municipality could opt out and not be involved. Well, we never opted out. We just didn't change our rules, so we just sat as we were. There's a number of establishments that would be, this could be available to them, but there's also a number that are not because of the proximity to churches and such. So, just for your consideration, X number are allowed, X number are not, just because of the proximity to a religious institution or school. So, these, these, these people would, you know, propose us to change our ordinance so that it would allow for this to be included, and/or then we would worry about regulation and such like this. But when I was with the gaming board years ago, the percentages were eighty percent and one hundred, it could not go over one hundred percent, and the, this was determined by one million plays of that particular machine. So, that's how this, that's how this is, your percentages are arrived in.
And then, so for the village, is there a limit to the number of licenses that would be available?
It's usually five units per establishment.
Correct.
Right.
But you can, you can get less.
Can you do it in any and all establishments, or are you limited by the amount of population or something, or?
No.
So, you could put as many as you want?
It has to, you have to have liquor.
Right. Okay. So, any liquor licensed facility could theoretically, if the ordinance was changed?
But like you said, if it's the proximity of a school or, or church, then no.
Because I saw, like, on your report, it said maximum number of machines, so it seemed to me like that indicated maybe there was a limit at some point.
Well, there's a maximum of five right now in the law, in the rules.
But that's per, that's per location, but this has like a hundred and forty-five, three hundred and thirty, eighty?
The average usually throughout the state is, is four machines, usually throughout the state. Because some establishments, you know, based upon the agreement between them and the licensed operator, you know...
I'm not talking about individual locations. I'm talking about total locations.
Correct.
Right.
Right. The average is four throughout the state.
Is four per, per village?
Per location that's eligible. In other words, you're taking into consideration restaurants.
And I'm saying, how do you determine which locations are, there's no maximum amount of locations that are eligible?
Per community, correct. If you, if you have a liquor license...
Beats the criteria, it's eligible.
Beats the criteria, then you are eligible.
If not by population, right?
No, sir.
I have a request, actually, from staff. If somebody spends $1 on an item of food at a local restaurant, what does the village capture and what does the state capture in tax?
Well, currently, we don't have a food and beverage tax, so the village would not capture any tax dollars from that.
State sales tax, essentially, right? Okay. And if you compare that to $1 being spent on video gambling, gaming, if this were to move forward, if I heard you correctly, thirty percent goes to the state?
And out of that, five percent goes back to the local municipality?
Five percent goes to municipality?
By law.
And then thirty-five percent to the business?
Correct.
Okay. I guess what I'm looking at is dollar velocity, which means when money stays in a community, it gets spent in. Where here, you're taking more money out of the community and sending it thirty-five percent to Springfield, to our friend Mike Madigan. You're giving thirty-five to the business owner when, if they spent the dollar on something else that may have a higher profit margin, thirty-five percent, they're actually not making as much money as they would if that dollar was spent on a different item, if their margin is above thirty-five percent after overhead, so...
Part of it was going to be won, though. Eighty-five percent is, he's saying, wins.
Eighty-five percent wins. So, you have to factor that in as well. I guess I'd like to see where the dollar velocity comes in to factor then as well, when you're taking this money out of the economy and sending it to Springfield, at thirty percent to the state versus a standard item that, that's taxed through regular state sales tax. How is that beneficial to us?
And there's also tax on, there's also tax to the establishment because it's a ten ninety-nine to them, and it's a ten ninety-nine to us as well.
Okay.
So, we're, we're also getting taxed by the state on that side.
So, the business pays approximately a fifty percent tax based on a ten eighty-nine because payroll taxes aren't taken out of it as well. It's a full, it's, okay. So, they actually lose fifty percent then before write-off. So, the business owner gets seventy, seventy-five percent.
The numbers we're seeing, though, are after the eighty, eighty-five percent has been returned to the people who are playing. This is the twenty percent that's taken off the top.
Correct. Because the five hundred is incurred as income.
And how you split that, so that money's all going someplace.
Right.
Yeah.
And hopefully, they're paying, playing, you know, the money, using the money in that local establishment, either buying something, drink or food, or, you know, reinvesting. And the owners are, are giving them, that's the other thing we haven't even discussed, is the business owners are allowed to reinvest in their business with the money they're making off the machines, and also able to hire more employees and take some time off for themselves. And, you know, it's worked in most cases. This has been a lifeline to a lot of, a lot of, a lot of businesses out here.
Sure, it's helpful, but there's also some that probably has hurt because, as Mayor suggested or said, if you're within a hundred feet of a church or a school...
Right.
You cannot. And we have, this is a town of churches.
Yes.
So, there's a lot of establishments...
And I was, I was just up in Zion last Monday, and that was a town of many churches, and they decided to go for it. But it's Zion, it's not Plainfield.
But not everybody can do it, so those who can't do it may get penalized. You don't know.
Unfortunately, that's, that was in the statute when, when, when it was voted on by the General Assembly, so that was put in there for a reason.
Well, I think it's good if the General Assembly passed it, whether it's good for local communities, it different matter. I think it's nice that there's options, towns have opted for it, which is fine. I have no problem with that. We have one actually in Plainfield, not in the village itself, but we do have one American Legion down there. You know, that's fine. They could use the revenue.
Right.
And they're, but they're not, no other restaurants close by. I mean, they're out next to the river and a mile away from any other establishment that might demand somebody to spend something, so...
Correct.
So, that's, that makes some sense in my sense, but in general, I don't know, if I were a small business person, I'm not, not sure, I'd be excited about having the option of doing this. I'd be afraid if my neighbors were doing it, I'd want to have, I'd have to do it, too, just to self-preservation. I'm not sure any of them will really win, but that's a personal opinion. I think what Trustee Peck was trying to do is the way to run out the calculation, I think we need to pay a little more time, spend a little more time doing that because the revenue figures we talked about, as I said, are the twenty percent that's disappearing, taken off the top. And that's going partially to the state, partially to you, partially to the municipality, five percent, and establishment gets thirty percent, too. So, it's, it's a breakdown, but the part that comes to the village is minuscule. I think, brought this up to the IML a number of times. It is hard to get excited about the five percent that the municipality gets. If we want to raise $5,000 a month, we have a lot better ways of doing it than to, you know, put this on top of our business owners, making their business decisions much more difficult. They have business models that are now, well, you put gaming in some of the businesses locally, it changes the game plan. It makes them, what do I do? How do I stay viable? And we've got a number of restaurants who are not succeeding, just restaurants. We have a number of stores that are empty, too. And so I'm concerned, I'd rather support the retail establishments first. If they're all thriving, then that means we got extra money that, that, you know, kitty the background there that we could tap into for entertainment, great. But if we can't keep our normal businesses going, I have a real concern with spending, taking money off the top for entertainment and to penalize a lot of the other businesses in town. I'd like to see us all thriving. The economy was bad. Happy yet, I think they're certainly doing better than they have been, but I think something needs to be watched. I understand your idea of giving people an option, but I think in this town, my opinion is, it's not a good option for it. We're better off not changing our position at the moment, yeah, personal opinion, but.
I see why, I see why you're here, is the business aspect. How many, how many restaurants did you bring with you? Or how many, how many representatives from the different, the many restaurants we have here in town are here today?
We have two restaurants that are currently here.
Okay, thank you.
And to that point, I did, you raised a question and, and, or you raised a point and there was a question that was asked of me. I thought I had the right answer, but I'm gonna ask, the hundred-foot rule, is that property line to property line? How is it handled with regard to churches that are located in strip malls and the like? I heard reference before that it was door front to door front, however, there's a difference now that perhaps the state's applying a property line to property line application to this?
I would, I'd like to get back to you on that because there is some misunderstandings on that as well and I don't know the answer at the moment because that, it's been, it's been addressed, but you're, you're absolutely correct, there is some differences here.
Right, well, and I ask because the two business owners that are here both are, if they, they use a property line to property line or a strip mall too, they're both going to be impacted and not be eligible.
Which came to my attention recently, was in the strip mall versus a standing prestructure, right.
Mr. Murphy, when you receive that answer, can you please send it to the whole board? Thank you.
Certainly.
What, I'm sorry, could you just take ten seconds? What is your agreement typically with businesses for supplying them the machines? Is there any commitment on their side? Is it, they have to keep them there for a minimum of six months, two years, five years?
Well, typically the, the standard agreements are, standard agreements, but everyone is allowed to negotiate the length of time. But as a licensed operator, the investment, if you're putting five machines plus the payout device, which is a self kiosk and that's the vault, that's where the money is contained and there to pay off the players. And that will run in a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is the initial investment. Now, the investment for the owners on the locations is real estate. They're giving up a certain place in their establishment, so that does have value. But for us, we're making a major investment in that establishment, hopefully it will pay out in, in a shorter period of time than a longer period of time because we've got money locked up in there for a period of time, that's our risk.
What does your standard contract say?
Typically five to ten years.
So if they're into this for a year and they decide that they don't like it, they're stuck?
Well, in our agreement, we have a clause that we do eighteen months.
Eighteen.
And if, if it's not working out between the two parties, if they're not making money, we're not making money, we, we let them out and move on, basically. But we have a good indication, I mean, we can tell pretty much if a place is gonna do what level just, if they're doing, if they're a successful business, they have a lot of foot traffic, they're gonna do well. If they're, if they're not doing well in their own business, it gets a little bit more riskier.
Mr. Rasic, do you have a comment?
Well, everyone else is.
Okay, they're done, go ahead.
Sure, are they all done? I have just a couple of comments. Mr. McGurtn, you're here to sell a product, aren't you?
Provide.
Provide, no, you're, I, do you profit with?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
Yes.
You know what, I view that entire sale process as nothing but snake oil. It's really unfortunate, no, I'm, I'm here to speak first and you can rebut. My, my difficulty is the fact is, I have worked for years in order to improve the image of the, the village of Plainfield. And seeing video gambling and everyone says, oh, you know, the, the profit is going to be so great. It'll, it'll help my business survive. Instead of having a good business model, gambling is the new panacea for making your business so much more successful. I view gambling literally as a cruel pursuit based on ignorance and falsehoods and people think they're going to win and they're not going to win. Another thing that I, I view gambling is, the simple fact is, if you could win in Las Vegas, that place would still be a desert. And that's the same thing with most video gambling. A number of individuals said, oh, there's eighty-five percent win, ninety-five, a hundred percent, you don't get a hundred percent win. But your win is based basically on what you put in the machine. That's not a win, that's just a draw. And that's, in my estimation, that's not good enough. It's, you, you said something, Mr. McGurtn, that really sort of irritated me for a moment. You said it's in your backyard, it's in your neighborhood. You know what I'd rather see in my neighborhood? I'd rather see a brand-new library than see video machines opening up and having them signs fluorescent, video, video gambling. I go through communities like Joliet and all these communities are listed and I look at the different, the corners that they're represented. You know what to me it does? It cheapens the community and I don't want that to happen in the village of Plainfield. Other people say, well, we're gonna make money off of this. You know, it's the same thing, I could remember when they sold, and I'm not against total gambling, you know, as though I'm, you know, some champion of rights for certain situations. But I can remember when they were, the state of Illinois, an individual say, when we get the lottery, we are going to solve all the problems of education. Well, that really didn't quite happen, did it? People, you could get hit by lightning ten times before winning the lottery and I feel the same thing with gambling. I see individuals, I've known a large number of cases that people who have gambled, they've become addicted to gambling. We don't ever talk about the social impact in a community, the, the difficulties that are produced by gambling. An individual might walk into a convenience store in order to buy a gallon of milk. You know what they do, they might say, hey, I'll put that four dollars in that machine and I'll buy two gallons of milk. And they walk out without even one gallon of milk. I'm, I'm not saying I'm gonna stop that type of thing, everybody has the right to go and gamble. But I certainly don't see it as a viable force for the village of Plainfield. I think, as I said, I think it cheapens it and I've got a lot more to say, but I know other people are probably ready to add some other points. One thing, I did a little bit of research on video gambling, the pros and cons of video gambling. And you know, it's not quite as controlled as you're trying to lead us to believe. You look at the research, there are independent video gambling parlors. Gambling parlors where an individual doesn't have to go to a tavern or a bar to gamble. And there's an awful lot of illegal types of activities. The state of Illinois can't control it, the, the county of Will can't control it. The, the individual, our Will County, Mr. Walsh, executives, he said, we can't control video gambling. It was a mistake to do it. Why do we wanna relive an error? I'm saying no for the village of Plainfield. If it has to go someplace else, fine. If someone wants to gamble, there are three or four boats within ten miles of this place and I don't think we need that much convenience to cheapen the community. And hopefully you'll understand my position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, with that said.
Big at the last statement there.
So, there's a couple trustees seem interested in more information before they make a decision. So is this the stance of the boards, they would like to see more information? Or I just, where are we at, I guess I could. We seem to have some supporters and some dissenters.
I mean, I, I'm just trying to learn a little bit about the whole process and the background and everything else. I mean, my feeling is, I'm, is very similar to Raddich, Trustee Raddich coming into this. I've seen it in other communities years ago and I was not impressed. So that was the background that I was bringing forward. But the other side of this is if there is some real need or real desire from existing businesses that need this and want this, then certainly I think it's our responsibility to maybe at least listen to those. But I don't really, I see, you said two representatives, to me, that's, that's not a good showing as far as what our business community's looking for. So I'm just trying to get some, gather some additional information at this point.
But just so you know, trustee, I think we had eleven here last time.
Last time, okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm currently a no, but I welcome a, a good, healthy debate with any business owner that would prefer to make seventeen and a half percent profit margin off video gambling than whatever profit margin they make off their food and beverages. And I think data is knowledge, or I'm sorry, knowledge is power, so bring us more data. But right now I'm a no, but I'd be happy to debate and go back and forth and banter a little bit on it, not a problem. Thank you.
And my positions you make, yeah, there's a no as well. Although I'm not adverse to seeing more information, but if it were to be decided today, I would say no. I don't think it's something that we want in town, based on what I, how I view it anyway, let's put it that way.
As long as we're doing summary remarks, I could remember a couple of years ago when the state of Illinois, and we just banned cigarette smoking in establishments. And then what happened? Every business owner that had cigarette smoking said, I'm going to go bankrupt unless we allow people to smoke in my business. Well, they smoke on the street and I think if they're gonna, if the business model is good enough, people will come to it. And just to entice individuals with certain types of situations to deprive them of their discretionary income, in my estimation, in an unfair fashion, I don't think it's needed. That's my opinion.
Well, I've been a no and I believe I'm still a no. I will listen because that much I'll give you, I'll listen to, to information, but I can tell you it would be an uphill battle. I counted, what, ten or eleven places on Lockport Street alone, that would qualify, they won't all do it, but they would qualify. That place alone that we put so much into. Now, I will say that there is a business owner in the audience and I believe I know which business yours is or definitely know which was Steve's. Probably does fit the model for that. But it, I'll tell you, you would have to have a lot more regulations than just saying, okay, you got a license with liquor and food and here you go. Because that means, what, every open storefront, we're gonna have the, you know, the Sally's that go in there where, you know, you open it up, it's a little bit of food and some wine and then while the moms are waiting for the kids to come home during the day, they're in there. And that's, that's realistic, it's not even funny. I'm just saying is I, I think there probably is some places for it. But it's, it's, it's not, it's not gonna be a blank check from me to say, yeah, just put the licensing in wherever. That's not gonna happen. I just, I am not gonna look at us becoming, you know, a dump. And when you look at the communities around us and the ones that have said yes and the ones that truly have said no, you know, I hear all the time, why aren't we Naperville this and Naperville that? Well, Naperville's a no and Bolingbrook's a no and some other towns around there. And I, I'm not saying it's all bad, I, I probably gamble once a year myself. But I am not gonna walk up down Lockport Street and see a million signs or have people just fill in storefronts because they can. So there's gonna have to be a lot more information here to, to turn my mind.
I myself am not opposed to the gambling industry at all. However, Mayor said that last time this was up, eighteen months ago, there were eleven businesses here. Now there's two. I think that says something in and of itself that, I don't know that the demand is there to universally change the whole town for, for two, for two businesses, if, if the, the falloff is that great where they're not that interested.
Well, I can't speak from the past, I can only speak from the present.
Right.
But, you know, like, if we're allowed another opportunity, I'm sure they'll attend.
I think, I'm just gonna go ahead and say, for more information in that, maybe we can come up with some more, maybe better participation by other vendors, not, excuse me, vendors, but you know what I mean, by other restaurants and or liquor. And maybe the presentation can be made and then the board would make a decision and put this to rest one way or another.
You know, Mayor Collins, may I enter, end with a closure remark on my part? I think that we, that we need community input. There's, you know what, we've got a viable community here that's very active. I'd like to hear people from our community speak out also. I know we're all representatives of the community, we represent the entire community as a group. But I'd like to see community groups provide some interest and if they are interested, and not only church leaders, business leaders, our Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, et cetera. Get a total commitment on everybody's part, not just individuals like myself who say, no, I don't think so. I'm not, I'm not here to legislate morality, but I'm here to legislate a good community and that's part of my issue. Thank you.
I think this board is quite receptive to information and such like this. And if we have, if we have more input by the public, I'm sure that a no vote could be changed to a yes just because of the support that a full house would be, so.
Let me encourage you though, if you're gonna provide a balanced perspective though.
Yes.
Right now, this, while we see, oh, this is revenue, hey, this is, everybody gained something by it. Well, question is how much is being lost by it? And we haven't seen any data around that. If you can provide that, that balances the way we view it, I think we'd be very receptive, at least I'd be very receptive to that. I've not seen it though, I understand the positives, but they gotta come from someplace. And I'm sure somebody's losing, but I don't know who or why. If we can find that out and then I think we'll have the answer that we're looking for, this makes sense or it does not make sense.
I'd also like, I'm sorry, I'd also, one more comment, Brian, I'd just like to make sure that the comments we do receive, the emails, whatever, wherever they're gonna be, own it. Put your real name on it, no anonymous stuff, I know the patch will be on fire tomorrow. Just, but just really, if you really wanna be taken seriously, own it. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in tonight, sir.
Good evening, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Hundred Forty-Third Street Extension.
Yeah, thank you. As the board is well aware, transportation and transportation improvements have been a very important issue to our residents within the community, very important to the mayor and board here too as well. And that was even brought to light even more through the strategic planning process with the community. Hundred and Forty-Third Street is one of the projects that was high on the priority list as far as working on the future for completion to help alleviate traffic congestion and just looking towards the future to help improve transportation for our community. The Will County Governmental League Transportation Committee also recognizes this as an important project as they have approved a two million dollar grant, it's a federal grant for the village of Plainfield specifically for this project. Initially, when the grant was approved, it was envisioned that a part would be used for engineering and a part would be used for construction, although there is some flexibility in that. So we may wanna talk about that at some point this evening, but only briefly would be fine. The main point tonight is we do have our, our firm, our lead firm, Crawford, Murphy and Tilly, here to provide a presentation as to where we are at with the project and talk about the future. To step back just a little bit, it was a few years ago, we went through a, and selected a firm based on our RFQ process, we requested qualifications from firms and it was an open request that was narrowed down to three firms. The three firms were then brought before the village board inside this room right here and the board did select Crawford, Murphy and Tilly to complete the Phase One and work on Hundred and Forty-Third Street for the village. So that's how we had gotten to the process where we were at today. So with that, I am going to turn it over to, we have three individuals here. We have Mr. Lou Dixon, we also have Bernie Held and then we have Eric Hanson is here too as well. And I don't know who's going to lead, but they're gonna provide a presentation from the podium here and we'll get them set up with the computer. So I'll turn it over to CMT.
You could just make sure the mic's on and then just identify yourself, sir.
Yeah. All right, my name's Eric Hanson, I'm with CMT and I've been working with Alan and, and Scott and Randy for several years on this project and we've made some progress and we'd like to provide some updates for you. And Lou and, Lou and Bernie have been engaged in, in the project and with meetings over the years as well. So we're, we're all pretty familiar with the project and, and some of the public meetings and the whole process. So just the first slide, this shows an overview of the entire project from the west to the east. At the very west end is the Illinois Route Fifty-Nine, the intersection to be reconstructed. Currently it's just the three, the three-legged intersection. And the county improved the western leg of that and we're, we're pointing to a box culvert that actually the county reconstructed at that time and, and to accommodate the widened roadway for the eastward extension, that culvert would, would need to be extended to the south and a little bit to the north as well. And then there's the intersection with Route Fifty-Nine and then continuing to the east as we basically parallel the West Norman Drain. The West Norman Drain would be just along the southern edge of the, the new roadway. And we began to, the road begins to climb in elevation to get up and over the DuPage River and there's an eight hundred and sixty-five foot long bridge there that's labeled in the orange color. And there'd be some retaining walls on the approaches to, to the bridge to, to minimize the footprint for a couple of reasons, one for property impacts, acquisition costs, but also to protect the water resources, the wetlands that are in the area as well. And then as, after we, after you go over the bridge, you come into the, a new intersection with Plainfield Naperville Road. And so there's some residential areas in there and we, there's been some noise, some noise studies that have been completed and the possibility for some walls to help attenuate some of the, any of the noises from the new roadway. And then the roadway continues to the east and that's along the Commonwealth Edison property and then eventually intersects with the Illinois One Twenty-Six at the eastern end of the project, which again were a hundred and forty- with Illinois 126 at the eastern end of the project, which, again, were 143rd tees into 126. So, that would then become a four-way intersection. And we'd improve, you know, each of the existing roadways, as well as the new construction for the new roadway. So, just at the western end, that's just a close-up view of the intersection at Illinois 59, with the new roadway going to the east. It'd be two through lanes in each direction, and then at each of the intersection, there'll be auxiliary turn lanes, a left turn lane, and then at least a right turn lane on the east leg of that, and the west leg of 143rd. And then some minimal improvements to Illinois 59. And that's just a picture, well, it's a structural engineering drawing. Actually, it's some of the drawings that were used in communications with Illinois DOT, is for the 865-foot-long bridge. It shows a plan in a profile view, and the picture down the lower right corner, that's just one of the, one of the piers that would have to be built, that would support the bridge. Again, it's a four-lane cross-section with a small, narrow median in the middle, separating the opposing traffic. And then the intersection at Plainfield Naperville Road, again, very similar to the other intersections. And then at the eastern end, the intersection with Illinois 126, this is a little more complicated because of the angle of intersection, Illinois 126 kind of being on a diagonal alignment. So, there, that's the, there'd be this large island in the northwest quadrant there, to allow for the right turns, and still to get the traffic lined up, to be able to make the turns. And these intersections would all be signalized with traffic signals, to control traffic flow as well. So, in December of last year, IDOT decided at that point that the project met all the criteria, and could move forward. They issued, in their vernacular, they issued what's called "design approval." And design approval is saying that the project, that sufficient documentation's been submitted, that identifies all the potential resources, and any potential impacts, and what measures would be taken, what the size of the project would be. So, it allows the, either IDOT or the local agency to move forward with some known conditions at that point. And one of the things that was identified in IDOT's design approval letter was that the additional and ongoing correspondence that's warranted with Commonwealth Edison over the, their facilities, and their property rights, and the need to coordinate the things. And that's been a constant, their needs, and Plainfield's, you know, transportation needs, that's been a constant topic throughout the entire process, in several meetings, and there will continue to be several meetings with ComEd. That's just a typical cross-section showing the existing facilities. There's the existing transmission line. And this typical section is basically between the Plainfield Naperville Road and the Illinois 126 routes. There's that 150-foot-wide corridor that we're planning to, you know, within that property, build the roadway, allow the existing transmission line to function. And there's also existing distribution lines, and then Commonwealth Edison also has intentions, they need to reserve, they've told us throughout, that they need to reserve the capacity for a future transmission line. So, that's the point of discussions, and continuing discussions. And to help with that, in going forward, CMT is, one of our coworkers, has a vast amount of experience in doing exactly that. He's, he worked, he represented the Missouri Department of Transportation for years, and representing their efforts, and working with the power generating utilities, and coordinating the needs of the transportation facilities, along with the utility needs. So, Ryan will be a big part of, be able to attend the meetings with us, and understand the terminology, and be better suited to communicate with those folks representing your interests. The project, we show, that's just the extent of the project. We broke it up into segments, just to show the costs. In general, the project construction cost is about $25 million. And then there's going to be some land acquisition needs, and easements to be acquired, and other, some other fees. And the biggest unknown in this is the Commonwealth Edison portion. We're not exactly sure of the amount of money. We, Plainfield's been very willing to meet with them, and had several meetings, and trying to, you know, get better information from them, and will continue to do that. And then engineering fees and other land acquisition fees will be part of that as well. So, in total, it's about a $30 million project, as we, as we've estimated it today, 25 million of which is the construction costs. So, what are the next steps, and where do we go from here? Well, we've provided to Alan, an engineering contract, to continue our efforts to move forward, if you choose to do that. And that's about a 30-month contract schedule, is what we've, what we've provided. The fee's about $2.1 million in total. And that would, is, I think the communication that was given to you would be a completed project, would provide you the plans and specs for bidding purposes. And then the other part of that was, is to continue to, you know, search and try to figure out how to pay for the construction of the project. So, as far as moving forward, that's where we're at today. We wanted to give you a brief update, as best we could, to allow you the opportunity to ask questions. And that's, I think that's, yeah, that's the last of our slides, so.
I don't have a particular question, but I have a concern, or just a comment to make to the public. This project, in my estimation, has to be completed. Trains and trucks are strangling the village of Plainfield. The economic strength of this community, the desirability of this community is being lost, simply because people don't have access to movement. And so, I have always supported this particular project, and as long as I am able, I would continue to support it. It's a wonderful project, and it needs to be done.
I'm in agreement with Trustee Ratschek. During my campaign and walking and knocking on doors to a lot of the residents, traffic was one of the major, major concerns in the community, so I'm for this project.
I've supported it for a long time, too. And I welcome Trustee Ratschek back from Italy, and he's a great voice, and tremendous logic, and I certainly like what he had to say about this particular project. It's very important to the village to, we do it. It's expensive. Whether we can afford it or not remains to be seen, but I think it's, I do have one, I don't want to get picky details on the design, but as I recall, we were only talking about retaining noise walls in a couple of places. Now, I see we got about one, two, three, four, five, five locations, and one of them very long at that. Has something changed? Because you said something about, I think, you put the retaining walls in to keep stuff away from the wetlands, and that's something which is new. I hadn't heard that statement before.
Right. So, west of Plainfield Naperville Road, those retaining walls are for structural purposes, to minimize the footprint of the embankment, and as you begin to, as the roadway goes up, as you approach the bridge. So, that was kind of a cost-benefit situation, and with the environmental issues related to the wetlands and the river, it was determined that the retaining walls were the best construction choice there. To the east of Plainfield Naperville Road, those are just, we're just pointing out that there is, noise walls were studied, as to the viability, if they actually reduce noise levels, you know, to a point where they're effective.
And those are the residents that had the issue around the noise.
Right.
But you're right, you've labeled them differently. Retaining wall on the west side of the bridge entrance, and noise walls on the other side. Now I-
Correct.
Okay, now I understand the difference. Thank you.
Thanks for asking, so I could go back and clarify, because I went through them quick.
I would, I mean, I would support this. I guess, obviously, that was always in the details. I mean, the number-one thing that I heard when I was running was, traffic is number-one by far. So, anything we can do to improve or alleviate traffic congestion in town, I think the residents would greatly appreciate that. Having said that, obviously, somebody's got to pay for all this. So, I guess the question there becomes, I think each time, as we go through this, over the years, I think it started maybe at 16, then it was 20, now it's 20, now it's 30. So, and that's just from my memory, so I'm not saying that things changed. But certainly, as it goes along, and things go on, $30 million is a lot of money for a village like ours. So, can you maybe, or somebody, to talk a little bit about how we hope to pay for this at some point?
Certainly. I'll lean to Mr. Persons, but there's no question about it. We would need to find federal funds to help with this particular project. That does lead to its own set of challenges. However, it is still worthy of us continuing, continuing this project.
I guess that's what I'm trying. So, federal funds is probably, is going to be required. We're hoping to get that. But you have to go to certain stages, I guess, before you can qualify or get on that list, to see if you will get that money. So, what we're trying to do now is continue the process to be able to get on or stay on that list. So, if there is money in the future, we might be eligible.
Correct. The nomenclature currently is to make projects shovel-ready. That seemed to be a very interesting word that showed up about, oh, eight years ago. So, anyhow, we used other terms before, but that seems to be the tone and tenor, that I'm going to lean to Mr. Persons to finish up.
To touch on one item, the first, first item that was brought up was a question about the grant funding, the federal grant funding here, too, as well, and it's staff's consensus that the money is there to utilize it for engineering, would forward the project and bring it closer to being, as Mr. Murphy had said, shovel-ready. And that if we think back to when the big economic stimulus program was provided by the federal government, they were paying, in essence, 100% of projects that qualified, and that were shovel-ready. And if we invest this money, and I talk about it as an investment, into the engineering side to get it ready, engineering and property acquisition to get it ready, it'll make it much more likely to qualify for federal, federal funding in the future. So, that was one of the items. I didn't hear any negative comments about that change. So, with that, unless there are some changes in direction, what staff will do is communicate back to the Will County Transportation, Governmental League Transportation Committee, that it's our desire to utilize the $2 million in federal funding for property acquisition, continue our partnership with IDOT, along, they are going, actually going to assist with property acquisition with us, too, as well, and to get the project shovel-ready. So, with that, that was the first question. So, if there are no negative comments related to that, we can move forward with that.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just still a little confused. So, the chart showed earlier, you were saying the $2 million grant for land acquisition. The slide, I think, before was showing 1.6 towards continuing this life. Can you go, and slide back, please, and it says what it's for?
The 1.6 is federal funds. The, there's $400,000 that comes from the village.
So, is that 1.6 different than the $2 million grant you're referring to?
The $2 million would go towards engineering. That would be the intent. So, above and beyond that, the property acquisition would be a partnership with IDOT, and, because they would be involved, too, as well, and hopefully that IDOT would assist in some regard. Now, there may be some additional capital that may have to be expended for property acquisition as well. So, I can't tell you for sure on that tonight. But the thinking back in the past was, a portion would be used for engineering out of the $2 million, and a portion would be used for construction. We believe the wisest thing at this point would be to utilize the $2 million, and invest as much as we can in the project to move it along as quickly as we can, to get it to that point where it's shovel-ready.
Thank you.
Yes, I have the one question. Is Governor Rauner just put the brick on all construction now? Is this project included in the brick, or is this one that was under consideration prior to that, and still could move forward?
Under consideration prior to that, actually, under the Will County Governmental League and the IDOT office. But the money is, this is a federal grant, and it really is just basically moving through the federal government, through IDOT's, IDOT's approval, and to the village of Plainfield.
Yeah, and obviously, it's a great project. We know we all need it. How confident are you, and I know you mentioned, your representative works well with ComEd, and that, how confident are we that we're going to continue to be able to make progress with ComEd on the easements, and the, and their power stations that are there, and all that? Because that one letter kind of concerned me a little, if we have to reimburse funds, if for some reason we don't have that relationship.
We, you know, we've completed quite a bit of work with ComEd, and that'll continue. There's still quite a bit that needs to be done. They have completed some replacements of towers out there, and they have taken our plan into consideration when they completed that work. So, they've already made some infrastructure improvements out there, and they didn't just scrap the village's plan and say, we're going to do whatever we want. They took it into consideration, too, as well. So, I think that's a good positive sign that they believe that this project's very doable. So, we'll have to continue that relationship and discussion.
Right. Thank you.
So, what, I'm sorry, with ComEd being the underlying landowner, what ownership would the road be? Is it just going to be an easement from ComEd, or?
It'd be a number of different things. You know, we would hope that we would actually own the property, but it, it could be a long-term easement agreement to exist there. And if you think about this even further, ideally, we would believe that this ultimately would be an IDOT roadway. It makes sense. It has a nice interconnection between what is now Route 30 and Route 126. And to get it along the way where we gain that partnership, where we can bring IDOT's influence and some of the funding, because remember, it's, it's not just the state money. There's a tremendous amount of federal money that goes to IDOT for transportation improvements, too, as well. So, it, we're continuing to build that relationship.
One thing in that letter that Trustee Bonucci brought up, is that if we don't get an agreement with ComEd, we're on the hook to reimburse the feds for some, something. How much is that already totaled, do you know?
Well, there isn't anything to date that would be concerning the $2 million, that if there, there wasn't an agreement with Commonwealth Edison, or the project didn't move forward at some level, that that would have to be paid back. I have, you know, I had asked the tough questions, what's the timetable, things like that. And the response was, generally about 10 years. And then I asked for an example of a project that didn't move forward, that had to reimburse the federal government for the money, grant money that they had, and the individual didn't have an example of a project. So, you know, I'm not saying that the likelihood of having to pay the money back is very slim, but all the indications I've gotten, we're going to have at least a 10-year window to work this out and construct the project, and hopefully, it doesn't take 10 years to complete the project. But we're going to have a 10-year window, and then it seems like that some of that is a little loose, that there's some extensions and things like that given. So, we, you know, if we felt like there was some jeopardy, that two years from now, we'd be paying this money back, we would be very cautious about this.
Okay. You answered my basic question, to analyze the risk. But theoretically, it's the $2 million grant that would have to go back. It's not expenditures that we're paying the engineering firm to do things. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the total $2 million. The feds aren't happy. In principle, they could ask for that back, although not likely to, from what you said. So, that's, I was looking for the magnitude, and you give me the magnitude. It's a $2 million grant. Okay, thank you.
When I first got elected in 2009, I remember calling you and saying, how do we get the 143rd project going? And in my opinion and resolve for this, and tenacity for this has not changed. There are several political obstacles that have been removed. In addition, no road project, especially with a bridge, and the different environmental conditions we have, is going to be inexpensive, okay? But it's my opinion that this road is crucial for us to continue to develop our industrial corridor on 143rd. I know several commercial realtors that have said, we have lost clients to surrounding communities that have a commercial, industrial corridor along 55, such as Bolingbrook, Romeoville, over and over, and saying, Garrett, we need 143rd, we need 143rd. There's been some opposition in the past to this. A lot of that has gone away. I guess, you know, we've used the term shovel-ready. I'd be like, I'd be honored to have a shovel, and go ahead and take that first little shovel and put it out. And if you allow me to drive a bulldozer, I'd do that, but I'm probably not going to have that happen. But thank you for all your hard work on this. I do support this project. I do believe that, once this is complete, no matter how long it takes, that we will recapture the investment in property taxes, once we do have those industrial clients along 143rd. So, it is money well spent, and we will get it back. Thank you.
One more historical comment. I'd like to commend Mayor Collins for his comments. About 10 years ago, they said this project-
about 10 years ago, they said this project would be 25 to 30 million dollars, and voila, it's there. Very precise, he very knows what the future holds.
I have this, never mind.
So next steps are that we will bring the CMT Services Agreement back to the Village Board for consideration, and we will continue this project forward, and Alan will continue to doing all the heavy lifting that he's been doing with CMT.
You know, Mayor Collins, oh, I'm sorry, you finish. You know, oftentimes people say it'll never happen, you know, I can honestly say, "Never say never," because I can remember when the Renwick Road Bridge Project was never going to happen. Well, now it's newly named Sam Riker Bridge, and it's really 25 years into planning and completion, through the good work of not only every individual in our village government, but also with other governmental improvements. So never say never, because this project will occur, I don't know if it'll happen in my lifetime, but maybe if I live another 25 years, but it's a possibility, and I certainly, obviously, would support it, and I think we should do everything we possibly can to keep promoting all of the activities to get completion, and see a good improvement for the Village of Plainfield.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is ADA Transition Plan.
Thank you, Board and Mayor, for your consideration tonight in regards to the American with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. Staff has completed a draft of the plan for your review, and tonight we're just going to go over some of the, the highlights of the plan. Back up a couple, yeah, there we go. So the intent of the transition plan is to define the village's approach to establishing and maintaining and administering mobility and accessibility practices within the jurisdictional authority of the village. With that, the plan will reference both standards from the American with Disabilities Act, guidelines from the FHWA, IDOT, our own village standards, and also other agencies such as the Capital Development Board. First and foremost with the plan is the, is a self-evaluation, and this is really an inventory of what we have right now. We have engineering interns currently doing evaluations of our sidewalk ramps throughout the village. They're two-member teams, they're equipped with smart levels, and also they have iPads that are specifically, they have programs on there that we've developed to capture the data. Data they're capturing consists of sidewalk widths, the depressions that are present at the, at the curb ramps, slope grade of the curb ramps, whether or not the curb ramp contains a tactile surface. I have a sample here of what we currently use. This is a truncated dome that has a contrasting color from the existing concrete, which, which is required. While our teams are out there, they are taking photos of the existing conditions, and we can pull up, pull up that data at any time on, on the tablets to, to display what, what information we've collected. All the, all the data and points are, are linked to our GIS system, so as far as producing exhibits and, most importantly, completing the self-evaluation process, we can filter that data with however we need to. The, the map on the back, in the background here shows Lockport Street towards the top, you kind of see James Street towards the middle, middle of the map, but all the triangle points on there represent curb ramps that we've inventoried, all the square points indicate landings. Generally, every, every curb ramp will have a landing, and if you look at an intersect, a four-way intersection, you're going to have, let's see, four, two, four, eight, eight ramps and four landings at, at each intersection, so there's quite a bit of data to capture. So far, we've, we've traversed approximately 50 miles within the village, so I believe we have about 240 miles total, so we're not quite a quarter of the way, way there yet. But also, on the, the slide here is a picture of our team. We generally have one person with a smart level who does all the measurements, and then we have another person who's on the tablet who's recording the data. One of the challenges with the transition plan is depending on when the curb ramp was constructed, it was constructed using a different standard. All the way on the, the right side is a curb ramp that was probably constructed 15-plus years ago. At that time, we didn't use, there was no requirement for a tactile surface, the only thing that may have been done was some indentations to make it a little less slick in the wintertime. We, we progressed on to that, and they started constructing the curb ramps using the cast-in-place concrete domes. Those were used, you know, probably eight to 10 years ago. There were some durability concerns with that, and then eventually, villages and the standards started requiring a composite-type tactile surface, which is what I'd shown earlier, and that's what we currently use. So the picture on the left looks to be a compliant ramp, without knowing the specific slopes of the ramp, I can't be sure, but generally, that's, that's what we look for So moving forward with the transition plan, the most important aspect is the self-evaluation and determining what, what we have in the village. From there, we can look to budget funds as far as what needs to be done in a timeframe in which that work would be completed. As part, as part of the plan, we will also have an ADA compliance team, where if there's any ADA issues within the village, there will be a name and a number for anybody in the public to contact if they have any issues. There will also be a public involvement portion of the plan, where we will solicit public input as far as if there are existing issues that need to be corrected within the village. We'll also have a plan update at a minimum every five years, and we also, and also within the plan, there'll be certain metrics to monitor whether the plan is being followed correctly and the appropriate improvements are being made. So with that, I look for the Board's input on our draft plan, and any, any comments you have, be happy to address.
A few comments, perhaps, is to be expected. Five years, I think, is too far out to have some feedback. I'd suggest annual reports, if you will, on progress. If you have a metric, you want to know much more quickly than five years, or at least I would, I'd like to know, and I think the Board would generally like to know. A couple of things about the plan itself, conceptually, I think you've described it well. We've got a couple of issues or questions. The responsibility for ADA Coordinator is the Village Hall, and it's Human Resources. I guess I'd submit that Human Resources is not the best spot to put that, you know, compliance, yes, but all the details are in the hands of Public Works, and I would prefer to see a single fanny in Public Works that's responsible for this, and I'm guessing Mr. Threewick, you're it, but at least I hope so. Because I think you, you're on track. I'm glad to see the program you laid out there, self-evaluation, because that's not in the transition plan, the compliance team is not. There is a reference somewhere to the village engineer, and that could either be you or it could be Baxton Wood, and I'm not sure, we use that term interchangeably between the two organizations, so I'm not sure which one it is here. I would hope it's the village itself. I don't, maybe Baxton Williams is involved, but again, I'm looking for somebody who really will watch over this and report to us once a year on progress. I think it helps to support your efforts if you know you have to give us a progress report. It shows a little bit of, sense of urgency, hey, I got a report, I better make sure if something happens. And you're on track to do all the right things, you got your interns doing an excellent job of documenting what needs to be done, you could prioritize that, once you got that kind of information, you're in good shape. Again, that's not in the transition report, but you might want to consider putting it in, because that's the heart of a really successful program, you described on that chart there, so.
All very good points. We, and you're right, it does very much make sense to have Public Works, or, you know, whether it's Scott, or we do it through facilities, or whatever the case may be, to be named as the ADA Coordinator. In our current plan, we do have that listed otherwise, but he's a very good observation, and perhaps we do name it as the Facilities Director. Randy Jessen's position might be the right one, and then he can coordinate with Scott, and he can coordinate with whomever else as well, so, yeah, we'll follow up on that.
I think it was a timing perspective when we named this originally, and also because some of it's for public buildings and risk management purposes, is why we initially had placed the HR Director's position at this point, was prior to getting the public right-of-ways and things like this established within this document, so it makes complete sense.
Policy standpoint, that decision, and then from a staff and day-to-day operations standpoint, for Administrator Murphy and Alan Persons to then designate, you know, who's going to actually take that on and then strike the HR Director off of that portion and that responsibility.
Any other thoughts and feedback?
Well, just one thought.
Sure.
You know, oftentimes, I could remember when the specific Act, Americans with Disabilities Act, was passed in 1990, and oftentimes, people said, "Oh, it's only for people who have wheelchairs," or totally immobilized one way or another. But you know, with our aging population, ala a couple of board members here, Mayor Collins and Trustee Lamb, it's good to have the safety devices built into the community. No, in all seriousness, you know, it's really great. I just recently returned from being in Europe for a couple of weeks, and you know what? Nothing like this is discussed. I was in Italy from top to bottom, nothing like this is being discussed, and it's really great to see that, you know, that we're moving forward, caring about our population, caring about not individuals, individuals who have disabilities, individuals who do not have disabilities. It's good to have safe streets and sidewalks, and your report, Mr. Threewick, was really right to the point, and it shows exactly where we're going. And it, it gives individuals perspective and knowing how we're going to achieve it, and it's going to make a better community. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just have, so is this just a question of us being proactive, or is it a situation that, I guess I hate to say it, but we might be in violation of some of the ordinances or state statutes, or federal statutes for that matter?
No, it is now, it is now a federal mandate that actually any agency that employs 50 more, or 50 or more employees should have an ADA Transition Plan in place, so the...
Is that a recent development?
Yeah, the Department of Transportation came out with a, they actually distributed a memo late last year detailing the requirement for public agencies to come up with this document. So the village is not alone in having to, to prepare this, actually, the, the state is in the process of preparing a statewide transition plan as well for their facilities.
And keep in mind, when the improvements were made five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, they were in compliance with the ADA standards at that time. So that this is, transition plan is to, a plan to bring things up to today's standards within a reasonable amount of time. So in our community, we're very fortunate, you know, just about every sidewalk, every one that I can think of has a ramp, but many do not have the tactile warning devices there too as well. So we're ahead of that curve in that regard, but it's, try and bring things up to today's standards in a reasonable period of time.
And I guess that was part of my next question, is so, we go through all this, we monitor, we fix through transition period, and then the specs change once again? How often are, how likely is that to happen?
It's entirely possible that they could change, there, there's no, actually, let me rephrase that, they will change. There's no question about it. The, when this bill was signed back in 1992, where it's gotten today, you know, the intentions were great back then, the applications make it a lot harder to do, but it, they, and there've been a couple of, you know, ready-fire-aim type moments as they've been trying to implement this. But the intent is still good, and thankfully, we are in a, as Alan pointed out, we're a relatively young community, so making these amendments and fixes within our community are, aren't all that difficult to do. There are other communities, and I worked in one in particular, where we actually had to pull out completely what we would otherwise think of, and as residents thought, were completely good sidewalks, to have them reinstalled to meet these new standards, and it was rather upsetting within that community. Thankfully, we're in a pretty good position here, that those fixes we have aren't nearly as challenging, so. The nice thing too is we do already have a budget for doing sidewalk repair already within our capital account. We also have funds set aside for side, for pathways and the like, so we already have made a commitment as a, as an organization to continue to make improvements within those assets, and we'll use those funds to be able to do that. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, you will have this document back before you as well for consideration, more than likely Monday, correct? Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Reminders?
There'll be a concert on the 16th by the Neverly Brothers, they promised they would never use the term snake oil. July 20th is the next Village Board meeting, and the 27th will be our next committee at the Hall.
We're seeking a motion. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.